Good morning. It's nine o'clock and I'll call this meeting to order for the Reno County Commission's meeting, April 25th, 2023. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and a prayer by Pastor Henry Flickon of our Redeemer Lutheran Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Eternal Father, as we have just celebrated the resurrection of your Son, let us be mindful that he first suffered and died for our sins and rose to life so we may have our life in you. We remember your eternal promise to care for your people as we pray for our community. We ask for your continual blessing for all citizens, services, and industry who together support and strengthen our county. We ask for your mercy to protect industry and commerce, care centers, hospitals, schools, and churches in and around our community, and we beg you to continue to shelter us for both man and natural calamities. We give you thanks for the hand of protection and safety to all law enforcement, fire, emergency, and healthcare personnel, as they strive to keep your people safe, as they serve and protect others in their line of duty. We pray for all directors, staff, and the many county workers who carry out their duties as they serve the well-being of your people. And we commend to you, Father, the leaders and administrators of Reno County, especially our commissioners, Daniel, Randy, John, Ron, and Don. Grant them wisdom as they seek to enact fair decisions and productive regulations for the betterment of your people to whom they serve. Guide these gathered this morning in their work to enable your people and community and business to prosper, and your name be glorified through them. Give us all wisdom to see your life-giving Spirit entrusted to us through your Son, Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God, now and forever. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Next on the agenda, we have two proclamations this week. Item 3A is the Police Week proclamation. Sheriff is here.
Hey, good morning. Darren Campbell, Sheriff of Reno County. Morning, gentlemen and ladies. I'm here before you this morning to discuss and add a request signatures on a proclamation for National Police Week, which is designated from May 15th to the 21st, 2023. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week. And whereas from the beginning of this nation, law enforcement officers have played an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms which are guaranteed by the Constitution and in protecting the lives and property of our citizens. Whereas through constant application of new procedures and techniques, such officers are becoming more efficient in their enforcement of our laws. And whereas it is important that our people know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their law enforcement agencies and the necessity for cooperating with them in maintaining law and order. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 26,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in a line of duty, including 245 officers in 2022 alone. And whereas it is fitting and proper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers and for the contributions they have made in the security and well-being of our people.
Now, therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, call upon all citizens of Reno County, Kansas, and all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15th through the 21st as Police Week. Please join us in commemorating police officers past and present by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service and in doing so have established for themselves an evitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens and do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through the 21st, 2023, as Police Week. Furthermore, we call upon all citizens of Reno County, Kansas, to observe May 15, 2023, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day to honor those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have disabled in the performance of their duty. Thank you for your service and all of your...
Absolutely. Thank you. And on May 12th, we'll be at a ceremony in front of all enforcement centers.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dylan.
Okay. Item 3B is one more proclamation for National Crime Victims' Rights Week.
Good morning again. How are you all doing? Thank you for having me today. This week is Crime Victims' Rights Week. Obviously, in our office and sheriff's office, the police department, all work hard in protecting victims' rights. Victims have the right to be part of the process. The theme for this year is Survivor Voices: Elevate, Engage, Effect Change. So that's what we will be focusing on this week. I would like to announce that we have a community candle lighting ceremony. Commissioner Hurst regularly attends that, and I invite the entire board to come and be with us that night. It's Thursday, April 27th, this Thursday, at 6:30 at the South Hutchinson Community Center at 101 West Avenue C in South Hutchinson. So what we do there is we recognize all those who are victims themselves or family survivors of victims, and they are allowed to light candles. They're encouraged to light candles in memory of those that they've lost. So regarding the proclamation, whereas the term victim is more than just a label and has legal standing and protections that go with it, along with it, and whereas crime victims' rights passed here in Kansas and at the federal level guarantee victims the right to meaningfully participate and use their voice in the criminal justice process, and whereas victim service providers, advocates, law enforcement officers, attorneys, and other allied professionals can help survivors find their justice by enforcing these rights, and whereas the right to provide an impact statement ensures that victims' voices are considered in court during the sentencing and with applicable restitution processes, and whereas including and elevating the voices of survivors makes certain that they are heard and seen and creates a path to forging and sustaining community trust, and whereas engaging survivors creates responses and services that are credible, meaningful, and centered on individual needs, and whereas survivors' lived experience can serve as a catalyst for implementing innovative programs, shifting existing programs in new directions, and changing policies or practices that prevent survivors from accessing services or pursuing justice. And whereas National Crime Victims' Rights Week, April 23rd to 29th, 2023, provides an opportunity to recommit listening to crime survivors in every space where decisions are made that could impact them. And whereas Reno County District Attorney's Office is hereby dedicated to amplifying the voices of survivors and creating an environment where survivors have the confidence that they will be heard, believed, and supported.
Now, therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 23rd through 29th, 2023, as Reno County Crime Victims' Rights Week. And the Board of County Commissioners of Reno County reaffirms the commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims' Rights Week and throughout the year, and expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your service, sir. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Item four is double comma. Is there anyone here for an item that's not on the agenda that'd like to address the commission this morning? Hearing none. We'll move on to any additions or revisions the commission has this morning. Seeing none here. Doesn't appear there are any. Moving to item six, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would move to appoint the consent agenda as presented by staff.
Commissioner Hurst moves. Is there a second? Second bike. Mr. Bogner. Oh, I'm sorry. I've done that to you twice.
No worries.
I know Don is on, so Mr. Bogner seconded that. Any discussion on site? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiesel?
Yes.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Motion pass five to zero. Moving right along, we have five, four, four budget presentations this morning. We'll start out with item 7A, which is the Tech 2024 Budget Request. Just as a reminder to all those presenting today, we have kind of a new format. Don't have it microphoned yet, so if you could speak a little louder than you would think, a little farther away, and that's because of some of the camera and microphone stuff that we're still working on. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Hope you're all having a great, great morning. I am Kevin Hess, President and CEO of Tech. We are celebrating our 50th year this year of providing sports and services to individuals within our community with intellectual disabilities. Those include men, women, and children. The Reno County Commission has been a strong partner over those entire 50 years, and we are grateful for that opportunity to be that partner with you. Tech has not been able to provide those top-quality services without your contributions and your support over the years, as well as our gracious donors within our community. The individuals served by Tech rely on us every day to provide those supports and services. We are their go-to people. Our entire staff is committed to wanting to provide those top-quality services to the community, as well as to the individuals that we serve within our community. Without the dedication of that staff, that would not be possible. So I call upon you to respectfully draw upon the 50 years' worth of partnership with the Reno County and Tech and to not drop our allocation below our 2023 allocation of 510,000. I would open up for any questions if the commission has any.
Thank you, Kevin. Reading on this, I think there's a part of this funding that is maybe statutorily...
Yes, there's statute for intellectual disabilities and mental health that Reno County, all counties are required to pay some, give some allocation to.
Questions from the commission? I have none as well. Appreciate, like I said, I didn't realize this is a 50-year partnership, so certainly appreciate what you do for our community and would suggest if you haven't gone to tour the facility there, Tech, the commissioners should do so.
Yeah. Anybody that would love to have a tour, we're doing them. Usually the second Tuesday of every month, but if a group would like to have a separate tour on their own, we're certainly open to it. We've probably brought in about 80 or 90 people through our facility in the last two months, so certainly open to it if you guys have interest.
I might say that as having a cousin that's been involved at Tech for 30-some years previously, and the involvement and the work that was presented to him to be able to do, as well as the activities that you've sent our great people out in the community to just take in the community and be part of the community, I appreciate that.
We try to build certainly upon our pillars, independence, self-worth, creativity, but thank you for your comment.
Kevin, thank you for being here today. Item 7B is Horizons.
Good morning. I'm Vicki Mater. I'm the CEO for Horizons Mental Health Center. Horizons Mental Health Center in Reno County have had a partnership since 1987 when Reno County chose us to be the public mental health authority for the county, and we're very privileged to have that honor and take care of those with mental illness here in Reno County. We utilize the funding that is provided by the county to underwrite the services that we provide to the uninsured and underinsured in our community. I provided some numbers and some data around those things, and as we continue through 2023, we continue to see a rise in the number of uninsured and underinsured, those that can't afford health insurance that cover mental health services or have to have catastrophic plans, and those don't have insurance at all. So we appreciate your past support of helping us provide those services to those individuals. We would just respectfully request that you maintain the current status quo of funding of, hold on, $452,025. Are there any questions?
Questions for Vicki?
I've got one. So we've got other, other businesses in the county that also provide fees on a sliding scale that do not get county money. Why should, why should we give your organization county money when we don't give these others, or should we give these others county money as well? Or like, what are you offering that's different from them that requires the taxpayers to help subsidize?
So Vicki, real quick, I want to just...
And I really don't know.
No, no, you're fine. You're fine. I was just clarifying, like, are there statutory requirements for this? And then what Vicki was wanting to...
Yes, I don't know if that answers, if that speaks directly to the question, but counties, well, there's a system set up for it. I think there's some discretion, especially as to amount. Every county has partnered, every county that I'm aware of partners with some organization to provide the mental health services for individual people that have to find somewhere kind of a last resort. That's set up by statute, so you guys should set up something. Yeah. 19-4 is there? Is there a 4?
One of the things that we do that we take care of the most vulnerable, we take care of people with SPMI and SED, which is severe persistent mental illness and severely, severe emotional distress. We are contracted with KADAS, the state, to provide those services, and we are some of the, we're the only ones who can provide those services, and bill insurance companies for those. We find that a lot of other agencies don't want to deal with those that are SPMI. We have a lot of difficulty with finding them healthcare and finding them other services and housing and food, and that's where we invest our time and our money so that we can help keep these individuals in the community and out of the state mental hospital. We also provide crisis services in our county. We are working towards 24/7 mobile crisis services at this time, but those are things that we provide that others aren't willing to provide, especially the crisis. The state requires, under the BSRB, for other therapists to have crisis plans, and they all rely on us to be their crisis plan. So if any of their consumers are in crisis, we're, we're the stopgap for that.
And I would be curious, and you probably don't have this answer right away, but I'd be curious if you could get back to me on what, how much of this funding is used for that versus, versus other things within the clinic? So, or how much of the funding you're requesting would be used specifically for what you just said as opposed to, you know, providing, you know, other services for other people?
Okay. I can, I can get some of that data as far as the uninsured. We struggle with our new, with our current EMR with the underinsured because they have insurance, and we have no way of delineating whether or not they, you know, they have coverage, what they're paying. So we can work on that. That'll be a little more difficult for us, and that's a high number of individuals as well.
Individually?
Yes. I was also going to give my, our standard quarterly report and kind of go quickly over our financial statements for March. For the month of March, our total patient revenue was $2.2 million. We had contractual deductions and write-offs of about 866,000. That left our net patient revenue at 1.4 million for the month of March. We received $360,000 in March for, from grant funding, state funding, and county subsidies. So our total operating revenue for the month of March is 1.7 million. I'd like to point out that our net patient revenue is up about almost 4 million from this time last year. So that's a significant increase for us. We believe that that has to do a lot with the new payment model and our ability to increase our staffing so we can increase our services. Unfortunately, our total expenses were 2.1 million, almost 2.2 million for the month of March. There's a couple of things that impacted that. One of them was our employee health insurance. We partnered with Hutch Hospital for health insurance for our employees, and we had an additional amount of 238,000 for the month of March of overage we had to pay. And then we also are in the process of implementing a new electronic medical record to better support operations and provide better data, and that was an additional $100,000. So considering those, while we do have a loss for the month of $436,000, some of that was expected and some unexpected. Any questions on financials? I know I've mentioned it before, but we are kind of in a transition period with the CCBHC of trying to navigate a shift in the culture of care. In the past, it's all been about the amount of time you spend with someone, and the new payment model supports more quality care, and so we're having to shift the culture out of our agency to not necessarily look at the amount of time, but the quality of time. And that's been a difficult shift, and we continue to work on that with our staff and implement that across our culture.
All, questions?
I just want to give you a couple of quick updates. One of the things that we're really, really proud of is recently we completed some training with the state of Kansas and to become a veteran-ready organization. So we have been given that status of veteran readiness. The state requires 30% of your staff to take the training, and we've had 90% of our staff take that training. Veterans are important to us in helping them navigate the difficult systems that are out there, and so we're really proud of that. We are looking for other funding opportunities. The KADAS is offering a mobile crisis grant. We have applied for that to provide 24/7 mobile crisis in the county, and there's some more federal funding that's available that we will also apply for. I would also like to just share that Larter State Hospital is in a very interesting cycle right now where there's a lot of open beds. This, this week alone, there's been on average six to eight open beds every day. So I'm not real sure why that is. We're really hoping it's because of the impact that we're making in the community to keep people out of the hospitals and in the community as part of our CCBHC. So that is all my updates. Thank you.
Item 7C is the Chamber.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Deborah Tufel. I'm the president and CEO of the Hutchinson Reno County Chamber of Commerce. Today, I stand before you, though, in request of funding for two of our divisions, Greater Hutch, which is an economic development partnership for Reno County, as well as Growth, Inc. You have long been supporters of our economic development work alongside the private sector that invests heavily in making sure that we are growing this economy by attracting new businesses, helping businesses that are here remain vital and grow, as well as working on some initiatives which has become really top priority, which are workforce development and solving some community capacity development issues that I think have been holding us back as a community, and we've been squarely involved in addressing those. I have a full presentation for you, but I thought in the interest of time, I know you requested to keep these to five minutes. You can read the data on the slides, but just to point out that our request for funding for these two divisions totals $70,000, which is level funding from last year's support. We appreciate your investment in this. $50,000 of Reno County's investment would go into the Greater Hutch Division, and $20,000 would be proposed to go into Growth, Inc. And Growth, Inc., as you know, is a 501(c)(6) organization. That is the entity that is on the front lines of development of a new industrial park for Reno County along the K98 corridor. The mission of Greater Hutch is multifaceted and mostly focuses on, as I said, business retention and expansion, business recruitment, but also enhancing community capacity in issues such as housing and childcare and quality of life issues. And then finally, but probably most importantly recently, workforce development. We have three employees that work in this division. Lacy Jansen is here with me with Greater Hutch. Lauren Storm is our Workforce Development Coordinator and Business Retention and Expansion Coordinator. She today is at a Career Quest event at Hutch Regional, exposing sixth graders across Reno County to careers in healthcare. As you know, we also had a public service at Career Day earlier in April, and you guys were a part of that, and thank you for sharing your knowledge about what it takes to be a county commissioner, but also what it takes to help our county tick all of the various careers across Reno County. Career Quest this year, we took from a pilot program last year serving 80 students to this year serving over 600 students across all Reno County schools to expose sixth graders to future career opportunities, and you know, there are future workforce, so it's important that we invest in them. And that's just one of the workforce development initiatives, but I think it's probably the most important thing we can do is invest in young people and making sure that they know that we have great jobs for them when they graduate. Also in your slide deck, there's some information about our business recruitment activity. That activity has really ratcheted up over the last two years. That activity has really ratcheted up over the last two years. RFP submissions are at an all-time high, and you'll see that in the data. Last year, we submitted Reno County sites on over 30 projects, and those totaled $18 billion in potential investment. That is why this new industrial park that we are working to develop is critical because the types of requests that we're seeing are for larger and larger sites. But we still need to make sure we're also backfilling properties, and we've done a great job of filling vacant properties in recent years, so much so that we are partnering with a group called Salt City Investments to develop a new spec building in the community. We have been marketing it to new prospects and have two, what I would say, advanced technology companies that are vying for that building. The first to sign on the dotted line will be the first one we see land, but we expect to see another spec building break ground here in the next couple of years. So that is wonderful news. Also, in the realm of new product development, as we develop this plan for the new industrial park, it's going to take infrastructure, and we appreciate that you guys have supported us with matching funds toward a base grant application that we submitted earlier this year. That application went in January 31st, and we think we are just days away from an announcement of what our organization will receive to help move that forward. We have applied for funding that will help us do a full master plan of the 154 acres that we were able to acquire. We also think that there will be some funding there for infrastructure, and that's where the county assistance becomes critical because we think it will really open up opportunity for development along the K-96 corridor, which we think is just a superb growth opportunity for Reno County in the future. All of that was outlined in a newsletter that I hope you all received in your inbox yesterday that we send out to all of our investors and partners. So there's more in there that I would encourage you to read. The last thing is, a sister organization to all of this work is our Downtown Hutch organization. And while you don't provide funding for Downtown Hutch, I think it is really kind of the heart of our community and our county. And we are partnering with City of Hutchinson on a master plan for downtown that we think will take us into the next two decades of making our community even more attractive for visitors and for new businesses. And so the last thing I would just point out about retail market trends is that retail really does help the drive of course sales tax as well as the tax base. Sales tax numbers have increased year over year for the last five years, and this year looks like we are on trend to continue to outpace that. Also vacancy rates on that previous slide have really dropped to an all-time low. Vacancy rates across Reno County and Hutchinson are below 1% at this point. So that's why new product development is so critical. So I appreciate your investment in what we do. We couldn't do this partnership without you. You stand alongside the City of Hutchinson and the City of South Hutchinson in providing our public sector funding. And then, like I said, about two-thirds of our funding comes from the private sector, which I think is a real testament to the fact that our business community wants to work alongside you to grow the economy. So thank you for your investment in us. I'd be open for questions.
Questions? Schner, Whitley, any? Commissioners?
I would just say, looking at the numbers that you provided here, I think, considering what the county puts in, I think the return on investment for the employee hired is pretty good. Say that.
Thank you. I should have also mentioned, we recently have hired another part-time staff person. I didn't mention her. Sarah Diamond just started on our staff in the last couple of weeks. She is going to be a part-time downtown coordinator, but also a grants coordinator. So part of her salary will come from the Greater Hutch funding as well. So we believe we have a tremendous staff, so thank you for helping us in that regard.
I just want to say that I spent considerable time reading all the numbers. It's surprising how much good is being done. I failed to say that, mention that to some of the other presenting groups earlier. We do have access to that. As you can see, by the questions or lack of questions, you might have done a pretty good job of presenting your case.
Thank you, commissioners.
Governor, any other questions? Deborah, thank you. Good work, notes, tough work. Appreciate all of your effort in growing our economy.
Well, thank you. I would say let's watch the news because we expect that base grant to be announced any day now, if not today. That's our hope.
Next up, 7D Startup Hutch, Jackson Swer is here. Looks like he brought his entire board with him this morning.
We might have a quorum, Daniel. Did they just announce it?
The grant just got announced.
Oh, great.
Would you like to come back?
Would you like, would you?
Well, hold on just a second.
Are we in the list? Because I want to know this, too. I can't take any credit for this particular thing.
I also, while I'm standing here with Jackson, just want to say that economic development is an ecosystem, and we are part of that ecosystem. But the entrepreneurship lane that Startup Hutch serves in is also an important cog in that wheel. And, you know, we have some crossover. We promote a lot of programs. Jackson has a lot of programs. Sometimes our projects coalesce. So I just want to speak in support of Jackson, but also because we have been waiting on this base grant news for literally the last six weeks.
Well, it's good news.
I was told on Friday that to.
They still have the list of 1.0 winners on their website.
Okay, well, I was told on Friday to embargo this information until the governor made the announcement, but since the press release did come out, right?
It's in my inbox.
It's a total of $50 million for the state of Kansas. We think that we are receiving $2 million towards our development. So I'll wait for the governor to actually confirm that. But anyway, thank you for your support of what we do.
Awesome.
Now I'll turn it over to Jackson.
Okay, that's actually, that's just more exciting than my news, to be honest. Okay, here, there's, the letter is up there. Do we have the?
Slideshow, yes.
The slideshow?
Yeah.
And does the clicker work?
Yes, it does.
It does, it does, okay. Well, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. I have too many slides, but I'll be fast. Good morning to the commissioner, uh, well, let me make sure I can go. Okay. Good morning to the commissioners, administrator, Parnington, and to our audience. I see a few, no more than a few, of my board members and several community partners here in the room. Thank you for coming out and support. I have a lot to share, so I'm going to go ahead and get going. Let me introduce our team. Startup Hutch has a small two-person staff with myself, Jackson Swer, our entrepreneur navigator, and Christopher Acker, our program administrator. Not on our payroll, but critical to our success are the staff of one of our key partners, the Hutchinson Community Foundation, who provide some receptionist help, IT, HR, and facility support staff. So it's not just the two of us who are running around, make everything happen in that building over there in the Peel Center.
You mean the community college?
The community college. Thank you to the community foundation sitting right behind me. The community college. Dr. Viall is not here today, so he doesn't get to get the credit. All right, thank you. So why are we asking you to support entrepreneurship in Reno County? The first thing to understand about our request is that it isn't coming from just Startup Hutch. So our work is guided by the Reno County Entrepreneurship Ecosystem Partnership. That's quite the mouthful. This is a broad group of community partners, which you can see up on the screen. And they come together quarterly to discuss entrepreneurship and what we can do to better support our local entrepreneurs and small businesses. In fact, we need to begin later this afternoon. The others not listed are primarily entrepreneurs themselves who lend their first-person experience with business ownership to the group. And we are requesting funds for the fifth-year and a five-year action plan, so I want to make sure that that's clear. You should know that the group is in the early stages of developing the next five-year action plan, which we expect to present to you sometime next year. We're very excited about what we've accomplished in the past few years, particularly last year. We gather our impact data when we survey all of our clients annually, which was 120 last year, but most of our results come from the 15 to 20 active borrowers that we have at any given time because they've agreed to provide that financial data, and I can't twist the arms very well of all the 100 other people that I talk to and get them to give it to me. But this past year, we reserved survey data from 21 respondents, again, mostly borrowers. That, among that, just 17.5% of our clients, their total revenue in 2022 was $9.9 million, which I think is a significant contribution to the economy of Reno County. This is our metrics dashboard that we put together for the RC. On this slide, you can see some of these other metrics. Most of these are included in our narrative request. I won't spend too much time here. I do want to point out that our level of engagement is very high and acknowledge that by the numbers, 2022 was a down year for our loan funds and our job creation. However, that's pretty much just a blip on the radar. Already in the first quarter of 2023, we facilitated $379,000 in loans, leveraging $1.75 million in other outside funding. And since we rebranded and I joined the staff in 2020, we've loaned out approximately $975,000. It's 971 and some change. So we're ahead of the pace to meet our total goal for the five-year plan. The RC group is currently considering how we need to adjust our metrics for the next plan, and I'm going to be recommending that we include a longer-than-a-one-year snapshot when we report on this loan funding so that we can address some of these variances between years. Here are some highlights from our loans from last year. On the right, you can see the two loans that we did in 2022. One supported a business acquisition for a Bueller-based entrepreneur, which is kind of an interesting project involving a remote internet-based business that will bring in money from outside Reno County. The other was for an elevator replacement at Leon Place to help LeBarre Properties improve access to that historic mixed-use downtown building. On the left, you can see representatives of SCED Startup Hutch and the Community Foundation. We don't count this loan in our metric, but we helped to facilitate a $300,000 gap loan from the Community Foundation to SCED, which allows them to unlock some capital and speed up housing rehab projects to the Federal Home Loan Bank project. Again, that's a small one-year loan, but I think it's important, speaking about economic development in Reno County, housing is a critically important thing. We're helping at least a little bit on the administrative side with that loan. I want to briefly go through some of the programming and services that we're able to provide to Reno County with your ongoing support, sensitive to the fact that I'm probably over my five minutes already. We host a monthly mingle event called Entrepreneurship Connections, and we also launched a monthly podcast series to promote local businesses this year, so I hope you'll check that out. We work to foster an online community to support entrepreneurs through our websites, social media pages, and a private idea exchange Facebook group where people can get on and ask questions in a group that's just for Reno County small business owners and people who want to support entrepreneurship in Reno County. We also provide free coaching calls and free in-person meetings with sort of the entrepreneur navigator, me mostly, and we send out a monthly newsletter with updates about events and local and regional resources for small businesses. But one of my favorite things, and I want to spend a little more time talking about, that we host every year is the Reno County Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge. So this is a local competition, and we have a regional group, and the winners get to compete at the state level later in the school year. So we actually just had two amazingly talented young women from Haven High School represent us up at the Kansas Entrepreneurship Challenge at K-State just last week. We get participation in this event from Haven, Pretty Prairie, and Bueller. Last year, we've had Hutch in the past, hope to get them back in the future. But we're always looking to add more students and more schools to participate. So if anyone in any of your areas would like to participate, you can get ahold of the business teacher at one of the area high schools, put them in touch with me. We'd love to have more participants. But we did have an up year last year from 2021, coming out the other side of the pandemic, coming back to doing the event in person. It was really good to do it last year. Okay. Real fast, I'm running out of time. So we also did some business builder workshops. This was a great collaboration with the Chamber. This was a luncheon learn that we did. We did a series of three of these, hope to bring these back next year. We also hosted a lender's luncheon to talk to local area lenders about our loan funds that we can access. We probably won't do that again until 2024, but I try to keep in touch with our local bankers in other ways. We hosted a 12-week course last year for aspiring entrepreneurs called Entrepreneur Business Basics. We're planning to bring that back in the fall, if I can work everything out with the City of Hutch and Network Kansas, who both kind of cosponsored that last year. And we did a series of marketing workshops in 2022 as well in collaboration with the Foxtrot, which is Hutch Rec's public resource media studio. So we try to collaborate with lots of different partners and put on a lot of different programming for local entrepreneurs and small businesses. Finally, earlier last year, this feels like ages ago. At the beginning of 2022, at a Chamber Awards Dinner, we recognized 15 businesses who doubled in size since 2019. That was a fun little challenge that we did. This is a list of 2023 initiatives, which I'm happy to talk about and which are explained in more detail in my narrative. Many of these are, I just talked about, that these are things that we have done in the past that we're doing again. And I want to just remind you, I try to include this slide all the time. I'm going to have to update that background picture soon. I think it comes from 2020. But all of what we do is an experiment, and we always try to be entrepreneurial in our own work as an organization. So we consider what we do to be an active experiment. We try to take this continuous learning and continuous improvement approach to our work. Now to the money part. I'll conclude my request, asking you to stick with us. So stick with the RC group and Startup Hutch as we work through this five-year action plan. You can see kind of what our plan was from the beginning on the screen here. We are making a difference. It is going well. There's significantly improved visibility for our organization and resources for entrepreneurs thanks to investments that we've made in marketing and communications through a rebranding effort. We're seeing more activity, and we have a strengthening small business community. I think that while, I would never presume to take credit for all of the great numbers that Deborah also shared with you before, but I think that some part at least of the growth and development of our small business community in Reno County is a result of the ongoing efforts of Startup Hutch, formerly the Quest Center. We are planning for the future. We know we're coming to the end of this five-year grant from the Hutchinson Community Foundation that ends at the end of next calendar year, which is the year that we're requesting funding for right now. We are making plans for what sustainable and equitable future funding will look like. This is a breakdown of the budget. This is included in your packet. Happy to answer any questions about any of this. Our request is $90,000, which is a $10,000 increase from last year. But I'll note for you that it's actually the same amount, actually $500 less than what we asked for and received back in 2020. So we're not seeing a big increase here. And my hope and goal is that this will be the last increase we'll need to request for a while. So as we enter into the planning for the next five-year plan for the RC group, that's my commitment. Now, I, I'm not totally in control of that, and I can't make any promises. Obviously, things are going to continue to cost more. But that's my commitment to you, is stick with us on this fifth year, and we will try to maintain this level of funding going forward. Any questions?
Questions?
I would, can you back it up one?
Yep.
I would like to visit with you sometime regarding what exactly is included in marketing, communications, as well as programming. I'll just be candid, I think marketing costs are pretty high. So I'd just like to have a chance to visit with you to see how that goes because, just looking at that.
I'll, I'll offer a couple of responses to that, and then I'd be happy to follow up more later on. So the marketing and communications expense includes some sponsorship dollars as well. So there's a little bit of extra cost in there from that, and also direct kind of cost of advertising. So we advertise through Google, we advertise through Facebook, a variety. I think we've spent some money on YouTube. And then there's also some cost for creating some of the content. You will see that that is trending downward because we brought some of the content creation side of that in-house with the new program administrator. And I will just say, as just perhaps the slightest amount of pushback against the concern about the marketing and communications, that when we entered into this five-year action plan, one of the primary things that was seen as a problem that we needed to address for the entrepreneurship ecosystem was a lack of awareness about the Quest Center and what it could do and what resources were out there. So the investment in marketing and communications was intentional. And frankly, it's a good thing we don't have the 2021 number up there because it's bigger than the 2022 number is, too. So we, but we are seeing a downward trend on that. Try to be, after we're done with the rebrand, try to get a little more under control.
You've got a lot of social marketing.
We do.
What about face-to-face, like Pretty Prairie Community Association, Arlington Pride Group? You know, you and I have talked about this before.
Yes, this is a, this is a familiar do-si-do, Ron. And I, I, I once again invite you that I'm always, always willing to come out and visit with folks if they will invite me to come to see them.
Sometimes you need to be invited, you need to invite yourself.
I, I, I understand and agree, Ron.
That's all. I think you're doing a great job, actually, not just looking at little things.
Understood.
Other questions?
So, so you and I talked about this earlier. I figured I would mention it in the public forum. I am a little bit disappointed that the, the people in the City of Hutchinson are, you know, are, well, the city has done, as, you know, you're hoping to get $90,000 from the city and $90,000 from the county, but there aren't any other cities or, or communities that you're looking for funding from. And I guess my thought in this is that, you know, my, my district is entirely within the city, and so it's, I feel like it's kind of double-dipping. And I would really like you to see more, or try and get more funding from other cities as opposed to the county. Because, you know, if they, you know, if it's, if it's worth it for the City of Hutchinson to raise people's taxes to fund you, then it's also worth it for some of these other communities, too. And I mean, it's not like they can't raise taxes the same way the city does because, you know, all of us have taxing authority, and so, so that, that's, that's just kind of my thought on this. I, I think it's a valuable program. I, I think it's a valuable program. I'm just worried about, you know, about, you know, how I'm going to tell, how I'm going to tell the people in my district that, hey, you know, we're, you know, the city of Hutchinson taxes are paying twice for this as opposed to, you know, some of the other outside cities and things.
Yeah, thank you for raising that in the meeting, John. I think that's, or Commissioner Weitzel, I'm probably too familiar, but I, I think that's, that's a good thought, and I'm certainly willing to explore requesting funds from some of the other local towns as well. Obviously, I wouldn't go to them asking for $90,000. They have much smaller budgets, but I do think that's an idea that has merit. Thank you for raising it in the meeting.
Commissioner Boebert?
I'm on the other side of what John's on. So if you're going after money from these other entities, how much money, what portion of your budget's being spent in those areas?
He's asking what portions being spent in his. Address that issue first.
You're, you're right. You'll, you'll notice, Don, that I chose not to answer John's question by saying that I think the city of Hutch is getting a heck of a deal.
That's what a lot of people think.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, Don. So what we are, we are trying to do as much as we can to get out in the county. One thing that we had an intention to do this year was to do some more kind of coffee-type events out in the county, and we discovered at the beginning of the year that not only the Chamber also had that idea, but they'd also already started branding it, so they were first to the punch on that. But that's, we love to collaborate with them, and they have a little more robust capacity to fund events than we do. So that's one answer. We are still looking for more businesses who want to partner with us in the Chamber to do those, so I would, maybe this could, would be a good time to put out the call for that. I think that that's a pretty good opportunity for folks. We're helping to cover the cost for the, for the Chamber sponsorship for that. We're also a member of the Haven and the Bueller Chambers. And as, as far as I'm aware, those are the two other outside Chamber organizations as well, so we try to stay plugged in to the economic development opportunities there. I'll admit that, you know, the, those are the two towns out in the county that seem to be the best organized around economic development also, so we probably have the most engagement with them. They also have staff that works on this stuff too, so Ashley in Bueller and Jitana in Haven, so that really helps them stay connected to us. We do, I don't have it in front of me, and I could, I could go try to figure out how much we have loaned out, out in the county. But that's, I guess that's the best way I have to answer that, Don. We, we do our best, but two-thirds of the people are in Hutchinson and probably the majority of the economic activity. And one area, I'll, well, I should probably shut up, but I just can't help myself. One area where I think we could get better is an ag. That's where we used to have some strength there with our former administrator, Dave Ducar, had a lot of experience in that space. We need to find a way to replace some of that experience within our ecosystem, mentoring around kind of development of ag-based businesses. I think that would help us with county outreach as well. But that's, so that's kind of in my field of vision, but...
I had to play devil's advocate there.
I, I appreciate that, Don.
Well, I will say, Don, I think you and I were kind of thinking the same thing but going at it a different way. I figured if he had to go to some of these small towns, then he'd, he'd have to spend more time out there. It was kind of my thought.
I never got a chance to come visit with you, Jackson.
I know.
Sorry. I will come down and visit with you, I promise, but one of the questions, watching your outline here when you were going through that, what's the demographic of most of the people aged that you're helping try to get started? I know there's some older ones, but predominantly...
You know, I don't have that in front of me, Randy, so I'm not, I'm going to try not to answer that, but I can track that down for you because we do...
I see a lot of technology training and thing, and if it's a younger sect there, probably pretty privy, most of that.
Yeah, so we just sort of, when I say that, I don't know that I give people's birthdays. I collect a lot of demographic data. I may have to do that just kind of back of the napkin. My sentiment is that it's a really pretty broad range, Randy. I, I mean, I get more people under 40 than over 40, for sure, but, but a lot of the established business owners who are looking to expand are kind of in the, probably in the 40 to 60 range too. And, but that, our primary demographic is younger. Those are the folks who are most likely to be starting up new things. And that kind of explains partially the choice that we've made to emphasize marketing through social media and things like that.
Right. Mr. Hirst? I would say one thing, this is my, my past experience. When I first started going out to communities, the comment was, geish, you're the first person we've ever seen out here from Hutchinson in years. And so you want to be a complete program, you have to get out, even though it seems like you're not doing anything or getting any results, you have to be out.
Jackson, thank you, and thank you for all of the supporters that came to you today. It looks like great content from the board, so thank the board for staying here. I'll counter some points that you're not getting out enough, but like I know from, 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 I mean, I've seen it in your slide deck, there are multiple efforts outside of the city of Hutch. I've seen multiple businesses being fostered in the Bueller area, so it's a big county. I know, I know, I know you have a lot of area you can cover, and so I do see you out in the county, so I'd like to make that point. You know, I, I, just for the new commissioners' information, I was a part of, of the charter group that started this program about four years ago, and they, you know, they asked for my, my thoughts as an, as an entrepreneur. You know, the, the combination of, you know, working with, with entrepreneurship and the private sector and, and the public sector, you know, my viewpoint, I think a viewpoint of a lot of those, those, those that were in the charter group were, were, you know, we can grow our tax base through this program. And the, the, the more important part was, I think there was some, you know, maybe negative reaction from the public on the amount of economic development efforts and funding that we're spending, attracting out-of-county investment. And, and the, the thing that I focused on, and I thought was the most valuable in this program, was, was the effort to root more of our wealth within the county through the development of entrepreneurship and, you know, giving people that live here the opportunity to grow a business and, you know, you know, not only, you know, basically, they would, they would live here and there would be taxes here, and, and we would kind of keep that cycle of, of funding and taxpayers and, and all of that kind of within the county. And so certainly, you know, Deborah and her staff have, have a broader, broader macro goal of, of growing our economy in any way possible, and that involves connecting with a lot of outside interest. But the thing that I liked about this program is that it was focused solely on the taxpayers that are here and helping them develop their businesses. The last point I would counter to the, the double-dip comment is it goes both ways, right? If you develop a business in Hutchinson, it potentially grows the tax base of the city of Hutchinson in the county, and so there, there could be a double dip in our direction possibly. With that, thank you, Jackson, and the team for being here today. Appreciate the work.
Thank you, Chairman.
Now, I think one thing about, even though there's two functions here, startup and a chamber, there are two different areas of expertise, and that's what I have found best, is that the chamber would call upon Startup Hutch to do things, and with their expertise and their financing ability, and they complement each other rather than spend both doing the same thing.
Yeah, thank you, Ron. I appreciate you saying that, and I just want to, I want to agree with that wholeheartedly. I think that, and I appreciate Daniel's words about rooting wealth here locally as well. I obviously think that that's important. I think that we need to do both, and that we do do both well here in Reno County, and that we try whenever possible to collaborate, but not to duplicate.
Thank you, Jackson. Does anybody else want to speak on this? I'm gonna, it's not on N7, but I think it would be good if commissioners are willing, you don't have to, to show your cards a little bit on, just so Randy can get an idea. He's putting the budget together. You don't have to say numbers or, you know, anything, but I think, I think giving Randy some, some early feedback into, you know, whether you should put these in as presented or, you know, whatnot might be helpful if you haven't. You don't have any, we'll move on. I know I've kind of sprung that on.
Yeah, but in that being said, and you're, I'm sorry. If you talk statutorily, what, is there a percentage statutorily we have to give, or is it just have to give, or I mean, because nobody's really discussed that when you brought that up.
Right. I think, and short answer is, I don't believe there is. I was looking at the resolution, statutes don't say anything, and I've been looking at, we've talked about...
I knew the resolution didn't, yeah.
So, so I don't, I think there's a lot of discretion that you guys have. You know, I always preach that commissioners' main role is to set the budget and use your discretion on how to spend money, so I think you have a lot of freedom here.
Isn't there, couldn't we have, at one point, wasn't there a maximum mill levy that could be assigned to each one of these?
They have some maximums, and I, I need to talk to Leslie, other staff, to see if it's been designated, but if it hasn't been designated yet, I think it'll be designated in the next budget, which mill levy you set for, and that, so kind of, once you set them, if you do it that way, then you're tied up, but at this point, I don't think you are.
Well, I think in some cases, if I read right, early on at the start of these programs, those numbers were specified. You'd read everything way back, and that's the other side of my deal here. Some of these commitments, like in these five-year plans and stuff, these things were started with that in mind, a five-year plan, and when you start monkeying with what was planned, pulling funds or doing things at this point, once they made that five-year commitment back in the day, if we start messing with that too strong, you're going to goof up the whole plan of, and, and these guys have been working their budgets towards that. I'd have to be a little careful about upsetting the apple cart in the end, but to address those two issues, I spent a lot of time yesterday, or Sunday, going through that. It's part of my Sunday routine, and it's, Ron, you're right, they did have some numbers early on, and, and they were low in the permitted back then, but we've had inflation. I don't know how they'd apply now those same percentages.
Good still.
Or same mill levies, but they were changed once, if I remember, and reading back through the old stuff, trying to get myself up to, up to speed on what's going on here. But yeah, and, but that's my two comments. I'd, I'd hate to upset the apple cart too much going forward, so they know what to expect. It would be a whole different story than, you know, sneak, you know, taking something away from that they're expecting from what previous councils have.
We've never met the mill levies, but it's always underneath that all the time, the maximum allowed. And I think Daniel and I were both on this task force that developed a five-year plan and heard input from a lot of people with regard to this, and have the, the Community Foundation stepped up and be a big part of this whole program to do the five-year plan and see how it worked out. And I think the results are coming out here in another year and a half. And that's a little, I thought it was well worth it to handle that five-year program, and I think it's working. It takes, economic development takes time and to get, see results, and I think those results are starting to show with the effort put in, and so I'd like to see this continue for another year.
Any other thoughts?
So I, I, I spent a lot of time thinking about this over, over the last, actually, couple of weeks since I started talking to some of these guys, and I, I think all of these are, are good programs that, that, you know, that we should have. My, my big struggle is, is this, is this county money that should be spent towards it? And, you know, I, I think, you know, there are, there are other chambers in Reno County that are not asking us for money, or at least I haven't seen a budget request yet. You know, I, I think Startup Hutch, I think if, if they had to go to cities to get their money rather than coming to the county, that they would be out more in the community and in those cities because they would have to justify the money they're getting from those cities. And, you know, Tech, I still need to, to meet with him. I don't know a whole lot about what they do. But, I mean, as far as like providing services to people that are uninsured or underinsured, I mean, we've got, we've got groups in the, in the county that maybe don't do the exact same thing, but are in the medical field and are on a sliding scale that don't get money, money from the county. And so, you know, is, are these good things to have? Are they, are they worth having? Yes. Should the citizens of the county be paying for them, or where should the money come? And, you know, I, I just, I don't think that county money is, is a good avenue for a lot of these places. I think they should get their funding elsewhere. And so that's, that's kind of my thought on, on a lot of this. So...
Any other comments?
Maybe suggestions where they could get this other money from might be helpful.
Yeah, cities, you know, businesses, I mean, places that, the organizations that aren't asking us for money get their money from. I mean, so, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, there's, there, there are places in the county that do similar things that don't get their money from the county for some of these. And then, you know, like I said, like with, with a couple of them, you know, I think, I think if they, if they were forced to go to the cities rather than the county, then they would spend more time out in the county.
I, I really think that comments should be qualified. I don't think they are out in the county.
Right, but then, then why are they not, or why are they not getting money from these other cities?
Those cities don't have any money.
They've got the same taxing that we have.
We represent those other cities as a county, right?
Yeah, I think we're talking about like a, you know, diminishing return situation here, like city of Hutch is a pretty large population base, city of Arlington is not. They have the most fundamental things they need to pay for, like roads and water services, and, and they, they just don't have any extra money to spend on that. I mean, we have, you know, this is a 0.0001% of our budget that we can help with that, and so these cities are not equal. I, I think if you, if you go and ask a small city in Reno County whether they have extra money to, to work on a broader plan of economic development, I think they'd say we just don't. Been the city of Bueller 11 years, I know that, so, but we are helping them anyways. I mean, I think if we make it black and white like that, I don't know how successful we're going to be. I don't, I think this is a good, good conversation. Randy, I don't know how much clarity you have, but we can talk about it. Thank you for everyone for being here today and presenting. Appreciate all the work you do for our county. Congratulations on the spacecraft.
It did update the website, and it is $2 million that was awarded to Growth Inc. and, great much.
You got it, huh?
So, so, after a lot of refreshing and a lot of shaking, it worked. After a lot of refreshing and a lot of shaking, it worked.
So Deborah, how much are you asking for this year?
Just to clarify.
Your $70,000 investment is leveraged to go a long ways. We're going to keep applying for grants.
So you're, you're asking, and you just brought.
Seventy thousand total.
Seventy thousand dollars, and you just brought $2 million into the county.
Yes.
All right, thank you, that's a good way to end.
That was, that was also, I think, you could tell us how much the ARPA money meant by getting this $2 million.
Sure. Yeah.
So the base grants, building a stronger economy grants, required 25% match. And initially, we applied for more than this $2 million. But realizing that they needed to spread that across the whole state. I think if I read the press release from the governor correctly, there were $2 billion of requests.
Yes.
Ours initially was 10 million, but we have to start somewhere. So in our meetings on this, you know, we said, we probably need to initially ask for funding for the master plan piece and the water line piece to get the development started. And then we'll look for other opportunities of ways to leverage that. The county's commitment in the form of a support letter for this came straight from ARPA dollars, and you committed 1.2 million dollars of matching towards the water line. And I think that was instrumental. I think without really solid local match, we wouldn't have been as competitive. I think that was a compelling argument. City of Hutchinson also provided a support letter that said that they would provide in-kind based on some of the capacity upgrades they would need to make to the reverse osmosis system that the city owns if they become the server of water to the park. South Hutch also provided a support letter of matching dollars for infrastructure. We put our own dollars into this. So that, we raised private sector dollars of $1 million towards the purchase of the land. And land purchases can be used as match going back as far as two years. So we purchased the land June 1 of '22, that counted as match. So all of these layers of matching dollars, I think, really helped us demonstrate we have local buy-in. Therefore, it validated why we were asking for what we did from the state. The press release from the governor says, I believe, that there were 38 projects across Kansas that received a portion of that $50 million. So I think the fact that we got 2 million out of the 50 million is a pretty good percentage that we were able to get for a project in Reno County. So yes, thank you for the ARPA commitment.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to item 8A. Randy, or Patrick, do you want to brief us a little bit?
Sure, switching gears completely, or at least largely. Every county is required by statute to designate a county newspaper. And there are various statutes that require publication of different things in the county newspaper. There's some quarterly financial information. There's also the easiest example I can think of is a lot of our resolutions, when you guys pass them, are affected upon publication, and then the publication goes into that county newspaper. In reviewing among county staff, just expenses and how much publication costs, we brainstormed different ways that we might be able to bring the cost down for those required publications. And that's where it was suggested that maybe we should just send out a request for proposals to see if there were more than one newspaper in the county that meets the qualifications found in KSA 64101 to be eligible. And then also find out what the rates would be, and then bring those, that information back to the commissioners for review and decide if you wanted to update, change, or remain the same your official newspaper. So the process kind of present, proposed would be to send an RFP out to many newspapers that we think might be eligible and broadcast that information, and just see if they wanted to submit a proposal showing us what, that, whether or not they meet the criteria, what their circulation is in the county, and how much they were charged for publications if we chose them as the, as the newspaper.
Question. This, this is a response to conversations from, from a previous meeting where, you know, felt like it was, it was not a great use of county taxpayer money to be publishing everything in a newspaper that very few people read anymore. So, if there's no questions, a motion to instruct the administrator to publish the RFP would be in order.
No motion. Nope, go ahead, John.
Mike, Commissioner Weitzel.
I'll second that.
Second, Mike, Commissioner Parks. Final discussion.
I would just say we'll find out what there is, and we'll bring it back to you guys for review.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Park?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Breezy?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Yeah, that must be very boring stuff to attend to the rest of the day. County Administrator Report.
Okay, I have the monthly reports from HR, IT, Maintenance, Public Works, Solid Waste, and these services in the packet. Don't really have anything to highlight there, but wanted to see if there's any questions about what they've stated in the, for, from you guys. Not, then my other report is the financial reports. And in here are the 22, kind of year-end, there's close to audited numbers as possible with being un-audited. So they're very close to the year-end numbers. And then also the 23, year-to-date's in here. We, based on comment at the last, last time I had financials, we did remove, and I scroll quickly here just so you'd see, that we did, that the cash balance forward, forward that would show up in revenues before, and the reserve for cash carryover and contingencies, which was an expense amount, have been taken out of those total, total numbers. So you kind of get an idea of these numbers of the budget number. So you get a chance to see that we actually, for the general fund, brought in more than what we budgeted, separate from the cash carryover. And then the expenses went over just a little bit, but that 5.6 million covers that overage. We did have in the, some transfers, just to show in county general, we did transfer money to the CIP Reserve Fund, Special Equipment Reserve Fund. And some of that also came out here, this 973,000, that's the difference between this 1,075,000. Courthouse improvements for the projects we're working on, that's gone into the CIP Reserve to help pay for that co, that project. And some, some of the other funds are in here. I don't know if you guys have any questions on some of the other. I will comment that I'll, I say that right as I pull up Health Department, but a lot of the funds have actually decreased. Their ending fund balance is lower than their beginning, so we have spent more than what we're bringing in on most funds. Public health, that's not the case, that's because of their grants. Once those grants are done, then some of that cash will go away also. So we have to be careful with their budget. But a lot of the funds did kind of decrease a little bit. Then I'll skip down, if you don't have any questions on the 22, there's 23, year-to-date report, kind of the same information, but that is through, as of March 31st. We're doing well on interest, our revenue. We did a budget for interest rates increase in that. So, but we are benefiting quite a bit from the interest right now. So that does help offset property taxes when we do the budget. Any questions, other questions on any of these departments or funds that are on here? The county general, this is the area where we do the outside agency appropriations. So Startup Hutch and Chamber, this is where their money comes from. Tech and Horizons have their own mill levy, which I guess, I think that's fine. So, for example, tech's fund, year-to-date, what they've received, and what they've spent, or what we've sent out, what we've received, and then what we've sent out to them, of their total allocation. And then Horizons. Any questions on that?
You said they, like Tech has their own, kind of came up earlier, their own mill levy. Who sets the mill levy?
You guys do. It's part of the county's total mill, you have.
Not, not their board or whatever, that's, it are.
That is completely the county.
Okay.
It's just part of the county's budget, but they're in a separate fund to show that appropriation.
There was a go in the 90s, they were in a position to become the state-appointed facility in Reno County. I was there through that process. And is that the reason that they received the funding and diversified? Or the other does not get anything from us? I mean, I don't, they provide the same kinds of services. And I kind of go along with John's questions, and I had questions that way, but I didn't think it was where I needed to bring them up today. Why would there not be a split?
I don't know that, I, what I don't know, when I have researches, if a split is not, if it's possible to split. I would guess that a lot of counties line up whoever the state-designated person is, and then send the funds that way, that's very common.
I knew they did that, so all clientele at that point had to come through them, even to the other organizations within the county. I didn't know if that still applied, or if you knew.
Well, again, I haven't, I haven't gone down the granular over, but I'm used to this other places where the system is kind of set up so that there's a designated entity that kind of catches all and then allocates people and resources, that's.
Yeah, I'm sure back then, that's who they became through, kind of through the state, but I didn't know if that still held, or if that was the reason that we wouldn't support others that do the same services.
And the question, I don't know the answer to that, I have to look up, is whether or not you could also support others if you wanted to. But I mean, I'm sure that's the idea.
I'm not saying we do, but I just, that's just a question, I mean, a lot of people ask, why you support one organization, not the other, and so.
And the reason is because the state has everyone, every county has an answer to the question of, where do you go first? And, and they have an entity set up that way for.
I would assume that, but that's why I was asking, but I didn't know if that's still the case.
That is still the system. There's, every county has a place that has a task of having to be the place to assign people or services.
I have on that, a couple other items, just going to mention that the auditors, they're on-site today for 22 audit, they'll, they're over at the annex, they'll be here most of the day and possibly tomorrow, depending on questions they have for various departments. I don't know if they can contact commissioners, but in case you get a contact, the auditors are on-site today. And then in conversing with the city, I think we're looking at the joint meeting. The date would be May 23rd. Last meeting, we talked about some possible dates, and I received an email from Kendall this morning that May 23rd should work. Just have to figure out the time and location, which I'll get that, but that is the day of a normal county commission meeting. So we'll probably just have it 11 o'clock after the commission meeting. Whether we have it in here or a different building, oh, well, that'll be to determine, be determined.
Now, I don't have a calendar in front of me, I guess I could look around these. That is a Wednesday then, maybe?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, we're still on Tuesdays till June.
Till July. July's when we move to Wednesday.
Because I had some constituents asking. He had mentioned last time, Dan, you did, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, last time about.
Nobody here.
About going out and looking at the roadway, and going out and looking at the roadway. Is that going to be a combined deal, or did you ever do anything with that? I'm just curious where that was at.
Yeah, I think we can do it either way. If it's, if it's an inconvenience for everybody to go to Prairie Hills, then we can do it here, and you guys can just make your own field trip out there. It's kind of neat every once in a while to move meetings around to, to different places, but I've kind of. Did you talk to?
I talked with, with them a little bit. That's.
Didn't care either, really, or?
Well, I don't know that they're really much interest in looking at the road. I think people have looked at the road, so they know that it's a township road, doesn't have shoulders, it doesn't have, you know, curb guttering and everything, so it's, yeah. It's not a, as big of an issue, I think, for them as, as it might be for school district or whoever.
Which road is it?
It's part city, part town, it's a township road, but the city, it's, the city limits are right there in the middle of the road, I believe.
I appreciate what you're trying to do, Daniel, but this county doesn't have any jurisdiction on this. And appreciate you if you can get people together, but, you know, in the, it's, it's a tough situation.
Well, to make it less tough, we could get together and sort it out.
Well, I don't know that outside of just facilitating, there's not, we can't, county can't do anything. Outside of just facilitating.
It could be brought up as an, as we do an agenda for that joint meeting. We can have that as a topic of discussion if you want.
I just think that there's so, so much like pushback on this issue, just like, I almost just want to like, have the meeting out there, spend 30 minutes on it. And if everybody's like, we don't want to do anything about it, then we can drop it. But it seems like people need to be pushed to at least not kick the can down the road. I don't, I don't know who's all, you know, it's in the county, I know that much.
Whose district is that in?
It's in my district.
Part of it's in the county. Part of it's in the city.
Daniel's probably receiving a lot of, lot of comment on that, like I am on certain things.
I bet that one will pass. Let me ask a question to maybe help here. Is it an inconvenience to meet at Prairie Hills? I don't think I'd have a problem meeting there.
I don't have a problem. Okay.
Wherever. Then, you know, it, is it a challenge for you guys?
I'll be wherever you guys tell me.
If we're having a meeting there, it may be a challenge. I mean, if we worked with the school district to actually get in the building, if that's what you're wanting, in addition to looking at the road, that may be the biggest part of the challenge.
Well, then what about IT?
Hey, that's where we're going to be during the meeting.
I, I don't.
Yeah, and we're going to need them for support as well. That's the other study on IT.
No, we, no.
Not, not for that meeting?
No, since it's a study session, and special, it's a joint meeting, not a study session. That's one that's not going to be televised unless you guys say we need to, but that's, wouldn't be my recommendation on that meeting.
Township could just give the other half of the road to the city. That's one solid.
Well, you could bring that up, it could be made. All right, well, it doesn't seem like anybody's, you know, opposed to the, the location. We don't have to spend the entire time talking about that issue. So don't be surprised if the, the address for the meeting isn't Prairie Hills, but.
A regular meeting? Do you have to get a train, go through the lunch line?
One question at a time. It would be, we would, I would, I would assume we would like try to get done by 11:30, and then meet up there at noon, 12:50.
Randy, I mean, interested in your question about lunch, so.
I'm not too much interested, quite frankly, because I don't know our role, can be anything.
Interesting to see what's. Somebody's got to do it. Mr. Parks, you have a comment on lunch?
Well, I just wondered if we had to get in line to kiddos and eat.
We could.
It might be out of school, I think.
Yeah, it might be.
That's a good, that's a good idea, but, all right, we'll see, we'll see what happens. It doesn't sound like anybody's terribly opposed.
It's tough in your district, isn't it? When you get questions.
So, okay, thank you, Randy, we'll sort that out. Is that all you had?
Yes.
County Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Bogner, you have anything to sort in?
Well, mainly, people are still, it's burning season, and people are still riding the. me awful hard on, on this, on the way they're reading the, the regulations and the way they're being interpreted by the people here, so I think I'll stop by upstairs and get a copy later on, a physical copy and take a look at this a little closer on my own. But it just keeps coming up and it's mostly by the guys who, who are good about taking care of their properties. And they feel their rights to take care of them if they've been hindered, I'll put it that way. And I want to get a, I want to get a hard copy in front of me to look at and possibly. We, we all tend to, well, you can't proofread yourself because your mind sees what you intended, not necessarily what's on the paper. And I'd like to reread the thing and, and I just, that's something I'm checking into because the comments just don't stop. Whether we're right or wrong, you know, as the material, the people are wondering and not seeing it the way we're seeing it or it was seen. So I'm, I'm just saying there'll probably be some comments coming from the public.
Mr. Parker, if you need with county staff, I'd like to listen to you to make, because I, I'm partly responsible for, for that. I want to make sure I understand what the issues are and try and correct them if I can. Let me follow you up there, if that's where you go after this, please.
I think would.
I know what the intentions were, but I just need to hear what the issues are to see. And I, I remember when I was updating the last one, I noticed that the county has a pattern of updating their burn resolution every four or five years to try and improve it, and we don't seem to have ever gotten one that people are, that we can live with, so let's keep working on it.
Well, to that, to answer your question, I did stop by, emergency preparedness, and that was the exact comment of an individual up there or down there. And by the way, that's a hell of an office to try to get into. Our, you can't walk down the hall to get there with, with our, our.
Doesn't work?
Doesn't work. That's city. Their, their, the city's part of the building and our system doesn't work with the cities, so we're locked out of parts of our own building. But anyway, that's a side issue, doesn't make much difference. But anyway, I'm just calling your attention that there's some upset individuals out there. Outside of that. I've seen some other things, but nothing that's pressing.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Burning in town in fire pits, burning debris in the fire pits, is that an issue? Burning your leaves in a fire pit in a backyard? I'm not doing it, I'm just asking, is that an issue? I know some that are. Does that fall under the guidelines of the permit, normal, other than just normal wood that you burn for?
Sorry.
Well, I brought it up, I just had to ask, I know several people asking.
If it's in the city, that's, that's not a, that's not part of our resolution.
That's what I thought, so.
That's, that's, that's what I can help with, yeah.
Yeah, that's still an ongoing issue with people without technologies to get on and register that. And there's some outlying areas, I've heard from some fire district over in Nickerson, outlying closer to the Rice County line, people that just don't have the technologies to get on and do that, so. And they do know they're still supposed to do that, so I know we talked about working on that, that's something that'd be good. But it's not really a report. I am going to attend this evening, start attending until Thursday morning, the KCCA meeting and Hays annual meeting, so I'll look forward to that time up there and getting to visit with some other folks as well. And I'm hoping the state has some good information for us, for those that work for us that are going to come down and tell us. Also, on the, I might mention on the, we've talked several times with the health department and also landfill, on the landfill issue and the tipping fee, I have had two people that, and I don't have any of the pictures, but they're, they are continuing to dump more now than what they were in the county on some roads north of town here, so. I know a guy that comes down alternate routes every day because he's like, now I get bored going the same way, so I drive different ways. And he's seen it in several areas, so I said, we'll be sure and take pictures of that and send them to me as documentation, but, so I know that it, it is happening, I don't know to what extent. So that's something just to be aware of, so other than that, I don't really have anything else.
Commissioner Parks, if I just may, because you, this always came up, in the, in the part, portions where the county resolution's in effect, recreational burning is in a safe manner with cover sufficient to prevent the embers from escaping in outdoor fireplaces, chimneys and fire pits, that's allowed. So that's not, so recreational burning in those manners is safe, it's responsible, it's allowed, unless the burn ban's in effect, that's the way time it's, it becomes an issue. So I mean, then there's open burning, which isn't, which is disallowed, and the issue that we always run into is people, the issue that's always come up is whether or not people are burning trash and actually doing an open burn, but trying to claim it's a recreational burn. County staff can explain that that frequently is an issue, but if they're truly doing recreational burning in, in an appropriate place for their own enjoyment, that's allowed.
You threw out my trash, you're allowed to burn. That's kind of a bygone thing, isn't it?
You know, you bring out a good point, because over at the farm, we got a barrel with it, we put a screen over the top of it and we'll burn things with it that way. So I presume that's within a container, so that wouldn't qualify.
Yeah, safe container with cover sufficient to prevent embers from escaping is what the resolution says.
I would let them know.
Yeah, the container's hot.
And you, you had a question on the, the Thursday, candle lighting, is it candle lighting?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, in South Hush, where was that at?
It's at the community building, which is off of E Street, I believe, D or E D.
That's on the west side of.
West side block, block west.
Okay. Six thirty.
It's a very good event.
What was the date on that? Thursday, yeah.
Thursday night.
That's this, or, okay. Your first?
Yeah. We covered that. Do we still have an ex officio member on the startup Hush Board this week? Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure we had one there. Did you all get, Randy, we were at both of that meeting, did you all get the information from EMS, the PowerPoint?
I sent it in the report last week, so they should have all, all that information.
I thought it was kind of interesting what we learned, about 55% of the population in the age group 20 to 64, and 20% of the population in the county's over 65. That meant 19% was, was in the age group 5 to 19, and the balance was under 5, which has been decreasing over the period of time. Birth rate decreasing essentially. There's an article in the Messenger from Ron Wilson, and that's rural, that was, that's very interesting on Carolyn Dunn. She used to be the Economic Development Director of Stafford County and now what they call Stafford County Port Authority, if you can figure that one out. But have built nine or 10 new houses through some, what they call, well, it's 140,000 backs. And they worked with K-State and the Architectural Department up there. And I thought I would give Carolyn a call sometime and, because known her and we've talked when we were on the Antren, Tropperneur thing. And thought I'd give them a call and take a look sometime, but, and just to try to relay that back to both SCID and Interfaith Housing and their energy efficient type program, but then it was kind of intriguing on how the process they went through to get those housing and that price thing. What size, I don't know, I haven't done it, but I thought it would be interesting. And I think our EMS program, as you saw, was pretty efficient when it comes to using our tax dollars for what they do. That's all I have.
Can I back up just real quick on EMS, on reimbursements? Just out of curiosity, maybe you know, Ben, you two have been there. It brought a thought to mind, when I was in Missouri for a few years, when you renewed your tag, you had the ability to buy a permit, which helped pay for air transport and EMS. What, I've never used it, so I don't know. Transported my son from the Genie Lake one time, he had an accident, we were tubing. Anyway, I'll just leave it at that. Clear up at the hospital, which I had a load of boat and falling. But what portion maybe do people's insurance don't pay and what happened down there? And you see these advertisements now all the time where they may not pay, and they were claiming back then, in their, you know, helicopter ride to the city, which they called it that, St. Louis was going to be, we're south there an hour, be anywhere from $15,000 to $20,000, insurance didn't necessarily cover it. Is that something that happens here or there? I don't know if that has any tie-in with air transport or some of the other things. Is there any numbers on that that would tell us that?
We'd have to ask them for that, I don't remember.
I don't know if that's something worth exploring, is the reason I bring it up, that, and how that exactly worked down there. I never subscribed to it, and, and in the rural area down there, I don't know if you're familiar with it, they would subscribe to a burn permit that you could buy for response. Now, I'm glad we don't do that here, but they would not respond to you on your fire outside the city unless you had bought that permit, they'll let you house burn down. And so I'm glad we don't do that here, that's a good thing. But they were big on permitting things like that, and I don't know how, how they had enough funds out of that maybe to cover those kinds of transportations. Well, that would be something to think about for people. It, it'd be totally up to them to contribute to if they wanted to do something like it or what, well.
Yeah, I can talk to the hospital.
If you're familiar enough with that, how that works.
I, I do know, we, we've talked to them a few times and, and we can have them come to our meeting to talk through it. I, I know like, like air transport, I know they don't provide any of that, so that wouldn't be our cost. But ambulance transport for sure, and like that whole, but it's a subsidy that's associated with basically uninsured uses of.
So it's being cut.
Yeah. So like taxpayers pay for all of the uninsured, you know, use of, of EMS, and it's, it's, you know, they can't, apparently they can't collect.
Well, I was on the ambulance board in Haven for a long time. When it comes in, your biggest insurer and the biggest users are those of the Medicare age. Medicare simply, when I went on that board, you could figure Medicare was going to be 70% of your costs. By the time I was off that board, what, five, six years later, you could expect Medicare to pay maybe closer to somewhere around 50% of the cost. They simply put a price limit on what they'll pay, whether it's half of what it costs or whatever. As far as your best case scenario from a business standpoint was that if the injuries resulted from a, not a sickness, but a, an accident or something, where you had independent insurance companies paying the full value of what, what, what their person received. Otherwise, and then when you dropped to Medicaid, you figured you were going to get 40% of your costs. And that declined also as time went on. So you can't turn down anybody when they make a call. You got to go, that's statute. And then the list of what you have to have, the personnel you have to have, and everything is determined. And the, so you're at that point, you got the one side, you're told what you're going to do, you got the other side, you're trying to get, get your reimbursed. Now, I was reading that, part of the reimbursement's always included, Haven was a volunteer entity. And, but the county did, as working as part of the county and being dispatched by the county for that area, we did get a lot of our supplies, and I noticed like in the supplies and stuff, when I was reading the, the financials, they seem high, but they, they are, they are. The county is participating there, first of all. And the next step is, is you have to provide the service. So the county or other taxing units end up making up the difference for the uninsured, underinsured, and unfortunately, the biggest group you're serving is underinsured massively because they just, that's how, that's how our federal government saves money. We're just going to put a cap, we're not going to pay certain items that are used routinely, we will not pay for those items. So that's where we come in, we've got to swallow and we've, because somebody's got to provide that service. And by statute, the county will provide that service. So you're caught. They're telling you on one end, you got to, the other end's saying, we're not going to pay. You're caught in the middle. If you're going to have the service, it's just the way it is.
I would say one thing, finally got some results from that Medicare thing that I brought up a month ago.
Good.
Is that they're actually, if you spend enough time and send enough information and talk to the right people after a half a dozen phone calls, they called back and said, we're in the process of shutting two of these companies down.
Good.
So I was.
And Ron, how many times did they threaten you in between if you were given a false information, they were coming after you?
They wanted to, definitely, I sent pictures, telephone numbers, all kinds of direct information.
After a half hour on the phone and them threatening and threatening me for exposing these people out, I hate to say that, but if they're. All of us young guys are taking notes so we know.
Hey, hey, how old are you? You get just about 60 and, and they're going to start storming in on you like crazy, so I'll get ready.
Anything else, but I just thought, I was, I was finally impressed with something government.
Commissioner, is your comments complete now?
Yes, sir.
You can keep going.
Commissioner Watts?
So, Career Day, there were, there were some of us here for that, and I thought that was an excellent event. I really enjoyed it and everybody I talked to said that their favorite thing was to go see the politicians.
I bet it was the star on their shirt.
And so, you know, it's nice that, that the young kids are, you know, getting interested in politics and stuff. I'm sure it had nothing to do with the sugar we gave them.
I think it had well to do with that. We're a gig back there, didn't it, John?
When, when I went south, of course, our, our groups were done, but the sheriff's department still had theirs going. And you want to see a bunch of happy kids. All those vehicles open and, and lights flashing and, and I had my windows up and I could hear the screams of delight. They were running around there checking out what kind of equipment those guys had.
And I will say also, getting in and, getting out and about in the county, I've seen a lot of our county departments out doing things, you know, as far as like, you know, working to, to recruit more childcare people, you know, working to get things out. And another thing that I have, that I, that has been a real blessing, I think, since I've gotten on the commission is, is being able to, to correct the record for people and, you know, they're, they've got questions or they've got, you know, a little bit frustrated with things and, you know, able to say, hey, you know, you know, this, this department actually does this and they're doing a very good job and this is who you would talk to about it and things like that. So I have been very, very pleased since I've gotten on the commission with, with a lot of the way the county's running. So I appreciate all the hard work that everybody, everybody does with that. So, I mean, yeah. So, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's really all I've got. I mean, I'm getting a lot of, a lot of pushback from the people around me, you know, about, you know, because they automatically correlate increase in property values to increase in county spending. And so I'm getting a lot of, a lot of kickback on that, which is, you know, why I'm really looking at even these small budget requests and saying, hey, is this really a county responsibility? And I'll continue to do that. And, you know, but any of these, any of these groups that are wanting money, if they want to come to me and talk to me and try to explain why they think it's a county, you know, why the county should be, should be funding these things, then I'm happy to talk to them. But, but yeah, I mean, I got on the commission to try and cut expenses, and so, you know, there's some really good programs, but by the same token, all of our money is taken by force. There's not very much of our budget that is people voluntarily give without, without threat of arrest or without threat of losing their property. And so if there's anything that's not essential for county business, I am probably going to not be in pay rep for that reason, even though they're good programs and they're good people running them.
Well, John, you brought up the point, and I'll second that point. Man, I can't go anywhere, even after the great effort that Daniel made to have the appraiser here and everything, try to get things on public record. That is a big issue. These appraisals, people are just upset. I failed to mention that earlier, but you reminded me, that's a big thing.
Well, thank commissioners, just a few comments for me. The Career Day, appreciate that those commissioners that were there, I did hear good comments on it. After Commissioner White's only kid, he was bringing his candy machine, I decided, yeah, there was no contest in coming to that. So thank you for that. That was a great extra added benefit there. So I think you found a permanent spot on that Career Day. I was going to mention, I noticed in the report that the, that we're working with a Hutch Regional Medical Center on a new EMS office in Arlington. Is that right? Yeah. I really would hope that we consider a joint conversation about what we're going to do with fire districts. And if we're going to build an EMS facility, if we could not talk about, you know, fire facilities at the same time, I just feel like duplicating investment out in that fairly sparse population area might, might not be a good thing. So I know one is quite a bit ahead of the other as far as discussions. Is the EMS building in progress? Is it just being considered?
I believe it's, they're getting quotes, all the quotes they need, bids to maybe make a decision. So it's not very far off, I don't think. Fires, August thirtieth is when they're coming for strategic discussion.
I know we always want like a big study to tell us, you know, what we could probably figure out with common sense, but the, the idea to me, and I know it's sensitive to those in Western Reno County, but a single location for the structured fire responses in Western Reno County, maybe even a manned facility out there that could be combined with EMS, makes a lot of sense to me. And I know there's strategically placed wildfire equipment that may need to stay more dispersed in the county, but it seems like, you know, even if you have a volunteer office that's five miles away, if you had a full-time office that's fifteen miles away that you were respond, you know, twenty-four seven, like we could maybe get some synergies associated with combining resources and maybe some better response time. Like, I know we want to study that, but I thought that seems logical. But Commissioner Oger has.
Oh, Dan, to your exact thing, when that dilemma hit Haven, it was actually the response of the EMS deal, trying to get a joint building, because a lot of the rooms could have been used, like their educational rooms, meeting rooms, all could have been used by both parties. How's all the equipment in the same building? And we were told, and the EMS portion pushed it. Turns out they got a new fire station and we got nothing because we were a vol, they were, let's see, by them, were they county? No, they weren't county either. There were two volunteer groups and something with, no, the county was funding the fire. And they, they made the statement that we don't do that. We don't put our facilities in with anybody else. But yet, I think over in Beulah, they have a joint building, and I, Prairie Prairie had a joint building, but we weren't allowed to have one. And so now we got two pretty nice buildings with a lot of the same facilities in them, just like you're talking about. And the people just shake their head and say, why? So your point's well taken, but for whatever reason, legalities or the people who have the on, the commission at the time, it did not happen.
Well, I've seen a lot of changes in the last few years that I've been here, and I think, you know, there's been much more of a willingness to consider more creative options. So, you know, I might just, if it's okay with the commission, ask Randy to just maybe, maybe our emergency response or emergency, what's the proper department name for that?
Emergency management.
Emergency management, have a conversation with, with the EMS department at Hutch Regional and just see if it's like, yeah, this could make some sense, or, or yeah, this is just, you know, impossible, and then we can get a report back on.
A question I have, are you thinking if they're doing a new station for EMS because they're limited on size, fire station's already there, that's a county-owned building. Are you saying give rid of that building and put a joint fire EMS facility at a different location?
I think the conversation should start with like, hey, if we had maybe a single responding facility for structured fires and EMS in Western Reno County, where would that go? Is it Arlington? You know, Arlington may not be, I mean, we looked at this once, Randy, if you remember, and there's like, I'm really bad at the roads out there, but there's two highways that intersect out there, and it was near, near, I don't know which city it was near, but it seems like, you know, strategically, if you place the facility at those two intersecting highways to get right on the highway and get where you get county.
That's just outside of South Pach, is it?
No, it's further west. Yeah.
Well, Pleasant View is where the two roads split, maybe, right there where Randy works.
But you got Arlington, you got fourteen, and then one out. And that is, that's the angle road.
Like, you can get anywhere.
Sixty-one here, it's one of the two. Yeah, sixty-one goes south.
Arlington has, has a, Highway eleven goes down.
Is there, are they building a new fire station? Is this what I'm hearing from you, Daniel?
EMS.
Just the EMS, so they couldn't connect them?
They could if we were creative enough.
I have to.
I mean, I agree with, they ought to be partnered up everywhere they're at. There's no reason not to.
What you're looking at, I think, is probably tied into a hybrid where you've got one unit and then you've got outlying units. Say in Sylvia, you've got a brush truck, whatever, there. You've got a situation at Turon, you've got a brush truck, and Abbeyville's six miles away, so that's no big item there.
Well, we're all going to have lots of great opinions on this, and if, I was just briefing the commission, and it doesn't seem like there's any objection to just having a conversation. So if we can work, work together with EMS work, we ought to at least have a conversation about it.
Problem buying land, as we found out, Randy, isn't there?
Yeah. So, okay, the only other thing I had was, I think we ought to get some microphone, microphones in here and put a microphone on that, it gets right on the line.
And that's for sound in here, not real, you're talking about, just so that you can hear speakers?
I think so.
And then the audience can hear you guys, not as much the.
I feel like I have pretty good hearing, and it's on the edge for me, so somebody that's.
Like me.
Well, I don't want to.
No, I got hearing loss pretty bad.
Yeah, so it's, if we can figure out a way, I think it's worth if the commission agrees some, some money to amplify the, those who are talking in here. I know we, I've heard from the audience before that they have trouble hearing us. And I know that's complicating when you have these kind of, but maybe.
Well, there's surely some kind of wire.
Maybe, Randy, you just, we just mute these generally and use our microphones, and that would be, but.
We can look at it. IT can, I know they've looked at it in the past, we can.
Put a megaphone on there.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
Underneath.
One option.
But, you know, it's not, it's not fair to anybody that has to say that, you know, hey, I can't hear a speaker, we ought to just have a better system here. So is there any objection that?
I can hear fine, but for the old guys on the commission, I think that might be a good idea.
That is the majority, buddy.
All right, so we're going to take a five-minute break here. We'll come back at eleven oh five for executive session. Unless the commission would change its mind, I don't expect us to come back into, I mean, we'll come back in recess, but probably not come back on the video for the recess unless we decide to have conversations. So the executive session will start at eleven oh five. Do I have, did I miss?
I sent it to Randy, but maybe I can forward it to you real quick.
You could just read it, and then, so the first one's an executive session for fifteen minutes for privileged legal matters.
And Commissioner, I do want to comment, that one may have discussion following the executive session.
We do. Sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Cindy asked, I sent it to her, but I forgot to include it to people who need it.
I might have, sometimes I get it.
No, this one's my, this one needed my hearing.
Guys, a thought on the sound deal while he's looking that up.
Yeah.
You know, they have the microphones in the churches on the pastor. It's wireless wherever he walks. Couldn't we have something like that up there? But I don't know what it does here.
We'd be lucky for a lapel mic. Well, everyone would have to change from one person to another with it.
I think you put a wireless connection on that, I'd be a little worried about hot mics and walking around.
Yeah, yeah, that's no good.
Doesn't let IT worry about it.
Must let IT.
I've got a.
I get it. I think it's a good time.
I've got a motion here to move the board to recess the executive session for fifteen minutes. So I'm going to call this. Move to executive session will start at eleven ten for fifteen minutes with the county administrator, county counselor, and Don Britton joining the governing body in the executive session. The justification for the executive session is discussion of acquisition of real property and the subject matter is acquisition of real property by the county. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Second, my Commissioner Parks, a discussion. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Hurst, Commissioner Parks.
Yes, okay. Motion passed five zero. Thank you.
That sounds good.
I should have just done a voice. I should have just done a voice.
That worked.